Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There's also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we actually get started, I would just ask, we'll be presenting something in more detail in a fuller presentation, but if we could take a moment of silence this morning. We lost quite the pillar of county government over the weekend. Mike Kelly, who was a county commissioner and then also our lobbyist up until the time of his death, along with his son Sean, so he has been around county government for many, many years. And he passed away, so if we could just take a moment of silence, remember their family in our thoughts and prayers, and again, we'll be doing something a little bit more in far presentations here in the near future. Thank you. With that, we will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 29, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 19, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. We have resolutions D through I. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We have one protest, a protest of special valuation, green belt, disqualification of a parcel with 4612 South 180th Street, Douglas County, Nebraska. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. By way of background, earlier this spring, the legislature passed LB 727, which suddenly made parcels that were within those city limits of a city villager, an SID, eligible for special valuation. The law had been that property, even if it was being used for agricultural purposes that was within the city limits, now had to be, or could not qualify for special valuation. Special valuation is a valuation preference in which property that's actively used for agricultural purposes is valued for its agricultural use only. In other words, if a parcel has some sort of non-agricultural influence on its value, like potential development, that is excluded. So often, the value, the difference is significant. And the legislature passed legislation that would let properties that had previously been ineligible become eligible, and so we got a number of applications, including for this one. And we issued a denial of the application because we didn't believe the property is used for agricultural or horticultural purposes. Now, the definition of agricultural or horticultural purposes means the commercial production of a plant or animal product. And commercial production is further defined in state regulations as you're either selling something or you're doing work on the property to get it ready, to get crops ready to sell or get animals ready to sell. In other words, a dormant parcel doesn't qualify for special valuation. It's got to be actively used for agriculture. Now, I think I had Dan Esch hand you some pictures. There are seven of them. Karen, if you could, oh, okay, if you could get this. The first four are aerial photos that are sort of time-lapsed. So the first one is in 2010, and it's an aerial photo of the parcel. Is there a way to get that glare off of it? There we go. Okay. And as you can see over the top, there are a handful of small trees. My understanding is that if you're harvesting a forage crop, the more trees, especially the more small volunteer trees that you have on the property, the less feasible it is, the more difficult it is to take the crop. It's costly, it's difficult to do, it's tough on your machinery. So in 2010, it looks like this property was probably used for harvesting forage crops. I'm going to skip past, in the interest of time, I'm going to skip past the second page two, which is from 2013, and page three, which is from 2016, and go to the aerial. This is from 22. You see how many more trees there are, okay? So harvesting anything would be a pretty difficult proposition. And it sort of is consistent in our belief that the property has kind of become dormant. The last three photos are pictures that one of our staffer took from the backside of the property. They got permission, went on the neighbor's property and took property. Photos from the backside. If you look at five, six, and seven, what you see is an example. Here's seven. It doesn't look like anything is being taken. What you do see are a lot of sort of volunteer trees sprouting up all over the place. Here's six, which is something similar through here. And then here's five. So based on what we're seeing with respect to the, to viewing the property, it does not appear that at least currently, the property is being used for the commercial production of a plant or animal product, and therefore does not qualify. Now, in looking at the protest from Mr. Stormo, he actually kind of corroborates that. It's very lengthy, and it talks about the history of the parcel and that at one time it was used for agricultural purposes. But someplace in the middle of his protest, he says they haven't taken any income, which I assume to me, and they haven't harvested anything in several years. So where we are now is a property that's not actively being used for commercial or agric, you know, for, for commercial production agriculture. Should the Stormo, should Mr. Stormo change, you know, should he start harvesting something? He's certainly free to reapply, and he would qualify because the size of the parcel is in excess of five acres. But at least right now, and the reason we sent the denial out on the application was because we don't think it's actively being used for agricultural purposes at the moment. And so we would recommend that the protest be denied.
All right. Is, you said Mr.?
Stormo.
Stormo, and so do you want to come forward and say a few words? Good morning.
Good morning. I guess the first thing I need to do is object to the use of photographs. I don't think, based on my work with law enforcement, that you can ask a neighbor. You can only take pictures from the public right away. So I object to that strategy right away. At any rate, I think my point is, and as he said, there's a long history of the property. My father's a professor at the university. He bought the property. He raised a specific kind of horse. I didn't get control of the property until 19, and I'm in that age group where my wife and I at that time had four different people who were disabled and were managing, we own and manage more than 350 acres of farmland. And sometimes, you know, you get a call from the emergency room and you're out of action for several weeks because your charge is in intensive care or whatever else happened. And so these events have transpired, and I think the market price of hay right now, for example, I did take hay on some of my land somewhere else, and in a larger piece, I got $510 one year, $250 one year, and $400. So I'm in a tough position. I have to make a difficult decision. Do I come down here with my equipment and, you know, bale the hay or fix the fence? One of the neighbors removed a large section of fence, so I can't graze it. And I would point out also that cedar trees don't affect the grazing at all. Animals don't mind walking around them. And generally, I think with a lot of mowing, it's not convenient, but generally, you just go in first and clip them. So I was upfront and said I didn't bale it in those particular years, but the reason I didn't bale it is, like I said, I'm running a larger farming business, and I have to make tough decisions because of the, of the situations I've been put in, both by my wife and my own health and then the health of the relatives. So, you know, as he said, am I getting it ready? Yes, I spent three days with three people last December doing work on the property to get it ready so that I can harvest it. And in fact, my wife made over 10 calls this year to attempt to find somebody to bail it. It's perfectly ready to be baled. It's a little late in the season, but I think it would be, if I can find somebody, and part of the problem I have finding somebody is my mother, who died in her late 80s, the last person that did the baling for her was also elderly. And if you're familiar with that, the road narrows to two lanes there, and we had a lot of trouble getting people that would. It takes two or three people because you have to stop traffic to move your equipment in, and the gentleman was older, and he just said, "I'm done. I can't do it anymore." And so far, again, for a variety of reasons, I haven't been able to find somebody else to go ahead and bale it. But I am, the crop is, I am in there weeding it. I haven't cut the trees because I'll bring my skid steer down and probably just pull them out. But I'm in there weeding it. I'm in there maintaining it. I was in there last year with a crew and did quite a bit of work to get it ready. So I believe I am commercially producing a crop. The fact that I didn't happen to sell any, and by the way, I didn't sell any of my 350 acres either. I didn't sell any. I produced it. It went into the elevator. It's being used for other purposes. So again, I'm back to, I think I am commercially producing. I have the intent to commercially produce, and the fact that it's not optimum because of some cedar trees, I don't think is relevant because again, I could put a horse or whatever out there also and harvest the hay. And so I believe I'm entitled to the, to the status. And I observe that a 4,500 square foot house behind me did get the status. So I don't know what I'm doing different. Can I answer any questions?
All right. Thank you. Right now, we have one light. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Correct.
How long have you owned this property?
My, my parents owned it, and then my mother died, and it eventually ended up getting into my control in 19.
Okay. Has it had green belt status prior to now?
Well, I don't think it was eligible. I don't know when my mother last looked into it. And I think, as you understand, you get older, there's other concerns. Sometimes my father died early.
The answer, Commissioner, is it hasn't. Yes? It has not for many, many, many years. For many years, the law was, once the property was annexed, once it became part of the city or an SID or a village, then it was ineligible. And so as far back as I'm ever able to check, I don't know when it was annexed, but it's been many years. And so no, it hasn't had special valuation status. Okay, so this is an initial application? This is a new application, right?
Okay. With essentially a new owner, although it's been in the family.
That's why I was asking, how long have you owned it?
I don't know exactly the date the deed transferred because my sister got some property, and she was dying also, and we transferred property back and forth. But I basically took control for the 2019 year.
Okay. And this is the first time you've applied for green belt status?
Correct. Again, imagine that you?
I understand. I understand. I'm just asking some questions.
Yes, yes.
So?
I believe it's also the first year it's eligible.
This is a hayfield, you say?
Yes.
And you've produced hay on this field in the past?
In the past, yes.
And you've cut hay?
And we've also pastured horses there and?
Okay.
Yes.
So when's the last time you cut hay on this field?
I don't know the answer because I didn't?
When's the last time you pastured animals on this field?
I don't know the answer to that either. You know, I was overseas and I was in other places.
So the field has been, at least for the recent past, fallow, just left to nature?
Well?
Yes or no?
I guess what's the recent past? Since, since I owned it, it's, it's, again, I've been out there applying herbicide. I've been out there trimming trees.
Maybe I'm not clear. Has it been used for a hayfield or a pasture since you owned it?
Yes.
Okay. And in the last year, has it been used as a hayfield or a pasture?
Yes.
Okay. And which one, a hayfield or a pasture?
Well, it hasn't had livestock in it, so it's a hayfield.
Hayfield.
I think USDA classes it as range land.
Sure. You've cut hay in the last year?
No, we have not cut hay. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so it's been a fallow hayfield?
It's not been fallow. I haven't harvested. There's a difference.
Well, you've grown hay?
Correct.
But you haven't cut hay?
Right, because it's, it hasn't been economical, and I haven't been able to find something to do it.
I understand. So it's fallow. It's not being cut. It's not producing hay that you cut and utilize elsewhere.
I've, I've produced it, but it's not been cut and sold.
Yeah. So Mr. Goodwilly?
Yes?
If I have a hayfield that I don't cut, but it does produce hay, does that qualify? Or do I have to cut it and sell it or do something with it? Well, the statute talks about commercial production, which implies selling. So your interpretation is I'd have to do something with the hay that I grow on this hayfield?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Stormo, I, how many acre, how many acres are we talking about?
It's, it's 10. There's a creek that runs across the front and?
Okay.
Some wetland.
Yeah, without really delving into the pictures, I understand your point about the, about the photographs and everything else, but the, I wanted to impress upon you, and I think you would, you would, you would clearly see this as being a circumstance that we have to deal with, is the difficulty that we have, we, we as a board, is that the consistent application of zoning authority, the consistent application of zoning authority based on statutory directive. So in other words, I reside in an area, and just north of me, I, I could not swing a stick without hitting somebody with 10 acres or 15 acres that don't have this particular type of green belt authority because they don't have the statutory directive. They're not doing anything from the statutory directive productive with the land at that particular point. So in order to make sure, and I'm not, I'm not preparing you for anything here. I'm just telling you, the difficulty that we have, or that at least I see I have, is that if we apply something and we give it to you, there's going to be 25 people up north of me that are going to come in and go, "Well, that's not fair. They treated me this way. I'm doing the same thing that this particular person is doing, and I don't get it." So maybe that's their fault because they didn't come in and ask like you did. But what I want to make sure is that the consistent application is applied, right? So I, I don't know if I've come to a determination here. This is a difficult situation. Clearly, you want to, clearly, you want to navigate this land in a way that's going to produce a green belt effect, right? I mean, you're going to?
Correct.
You're, you're going to make money off of this land.
Correct.
The difficulty I run into, and I'll stop here. I didn't mean to preach to you. I, I'm telling you, I'm concerned about it, is that I, I don't, when that occurs, we have an easier path, right? So I, you're more than welcome to comment on that, but that's the difficulty that I'm seeing.
No, and I completely agree with you. As I read the statute myself, as a retired First State Executive, I've sat in a lot of rooms with a lot of lawyers, and, you know, the commercial production is what stuck out. But I, I mean, to me, commercial production is doing what I'm doing, okay, with the intent of selling it. And in fact, you know, I guess I don't know what would happen if, let's say you ruled against me and I appealed, and in the meantime, I've harvested the hay, which I think is a very possible thing. You know, that's part of the reason I'm down here today is to arrange somebody, if I can find somebody, to get in there and harvest it. So, because I do want the money. So, you know, the reality in, in the farming business, sometimes you can't get into the wet spot. Sometimes it snows sooner than you do. Sometimes other things get in the way, and you, you know, I made a comment in there about, you know, I'm running an interstate business, and I just have to decide sometimes, is it worth my time to come down and take that commercial crop? That doesn't mean I didn't produce it commercially, is my belief. So, and I, and I understand exactly. I think that's where it hinges on.
Yeah. Well, I, I'll give you the rest of my time back, Madam Chair. Mr. Stormo, thanks for coming down, and thank you for the information you provided. No, I, no, I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, I don't have a question, but more of a comment in terms of intent, that I, I'm more inclined to agree with you that, and again, let me back up because there were many, the law was changed because, as you just said, Mr. Goodwilly, because of the annexation that had occurred previously, anybody who was annexed lost their green belt. And that caused a whole lot of a domino effect, if you will. And that's why I believe that the law was changed for, for that purpose. So again, I think that there's, where it becomes, question is, you're producing it, you're just haven't sold it yet. Whereas, the assessor's office is saying it, you haven't shown the sale of it, so then that means you haven't commercially. You haven't fulfilled the requirement of the new statute to say that, that you are doing it for commercial purposes. I, on the other hand, believe that you are because you are producing it, and you eventually, if not this year, maybe next, will produce it and sell it, or produce it and pasture animals on it. So I believe that the law, the way it was written, actually was written not for you, but?
For the circumstance.
For you and the purposes for you to be able to, to be granted the green belt for the property. And Commissioner Friend is right. There could be more of that come, but again, it was because the change in the law that is allowing that to occur, because when the law was the way it was prior to being changed, once that property was annexed, your green belt was gone, end of story, period. But yet, there were many properties that continued to operate their properties the way that they did prior to annexation. So that's why I believe they came back with the new, new law. So I'm, I'm more apt to say you still do qualify, and it's because of that law that I believe that you qualify. So. Commissioner Garcia?
Question's more for Mr. Goodwilly. Is the question before us and the determination that goes with it more of a retroactive perspective or intent perspective? And what I mean by that is that, is what we really should be looking at is, in, let's say, in calendar year 2022, was there commercial use? Is that really the main subject matter we should be looking at? Or there's this element of intent, or I intend to do more commercially in 2023, therefore I deserve the green belt qualification?
No. Commissioner, what you have in front of you is solely 2023, because LB 727 passed this spring with an emergency clause. It doesn't have anything to do with any prior years, okay? So Mr. Stormo applied for special valuation. It was our opinion that they don't qualify for this year. If he does what he says he's going to do, if he's going to hay it, he'll certainly qualify for 2024, and a new application would, would get him the status. But at least as of, as of where we stand today, we don't think he qualifies. So it would be just this individual year. If he does what he says he's doing, then he'll qualify, and in future years, he'll get it.
That's, seems to be kind of in the middle then, because we're determining for 2023?
Right.
The green belt qualification, but we're making that determination somewhat retroactively on the past, for what we've seen, that there has not been commercial activity in recent history, like 2022 or the first half of this year?
It, it, it doesn't sound like, I mean, it sounds like there may have, he may have, Mr. Stormo may have gone out there and done some work, although that wasn't evident from his application to us. But nonetheless, 2022 and before, he wouldn't qualify because it was, the law was still in place, that if you were part of the city, you didn't get special valuation. So now that this has opened up, this is the first year for that in 2023. We received the application. It did not appear to us the property qualified. Getting it or not getting it for a particular year, doesn't, it doesn't time bar somebody from applying in future years if the status changes in some fashion. Similarly, just because if you were to, if you were to, to grant the special value application this year, and next year, Mr. Stormo says, "Well, to heck with farming. I'm going to farm condos instead of hay, and here come the bulldozers," then the property would be disqualified. So at best, this is going to be a year-to-year sort of thing.
And it's an annual application?
Yes. Well, it's not an annual application, but it's subject to review periodically.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can point out, I don't think I can use the property to thing but a single-family residence, because I think it has to be more than, up to 20 acres before I can do condos on it, just for the record. And again, to rebut, I think I expressed my intent. I came down here. I spent a bunch of time, tried to get the property ready. Again, you can always do more in that kind of land, so.
It sounds, it sounds like you do, you have an incorporated business that you would filter this hay production and selling through?
The business is all held in trusts, yes.
In a trust? So you, do you have like an LLC or some kind of actually for-profit business that you can readily commercially sell hay to somebody?
Actually, I guess I just sell it in my own name or in the name of the trust. I hadn't considered that to be an issue. It's never been an issue before. In other words, most of my crops are sold directly. There's not any liability issue. But that is one of the reasons it hasn't been pastured, is again, I have to have, South Dakota law is a lot more lenient in the insurance I have to take before I can rent it out for equestrian use. So I've got to deal with the insurance issue today, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other lights. What is the will of the board? I would make a motion to grant the green belt. Is there a second? Is there a second? No second? What's the will of the board? It's either we accept the disqualification of the green belt or we grant him the green belt, so.
I'm going to deny.
Okay, there is a motion to deny the green belt. There is a second by Commissioner Morgan, motion by Commissioner Rogers to deny, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any further questions or comments?
Madam Chair, does this include adjournment?
We have no executive session, so it could if the maker and the second agree. Yes. All right. Please vote.
One moment, please. Motion to deny passes five to one. Commissioner Borgeson voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming down this morning. We will move into our Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan is here behind me. Commissioner Rogers? And Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 29, 2023. An item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 12, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through M. Please note that items C2 and D have been stricken from the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the removal of A6.
A6. Any others? All right, is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Approval of consent agenda minus C2 and D and the setting aside for right now, A6. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, do we have a motion to approve A6? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
For the record, I need to abstain because I sit on that board.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Next, we have a resolution proclaiming the month of September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. We do present this every year, so I will read the resolution. Whereas, September is known globally as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and the goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and to help connect people with appropriate support services. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And according to the Centers for Disease Control, CDC, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death overall in the United States, claiming the lives of over 4,500 people annually with an average of 132 suicides completed daily. And the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including friends, families, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas Douglas County publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health. And whereas our regional organizations like the Nebraska State Suicide Prevention Coalition, the Nebraska Region 6 Behavioral Health Care, some national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Health and the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline and the National Association of Counties and the National Association of Mental Well-Being First Aid Program are on the front lines to educate and break down the barriers that continue to be a problem in openly and honestly discussing mental health. And whereas in July of 2022, dialing 988 from anywhere in the U.S. was designated as the new three-digit dialing code that routes callers to the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggle, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas a simple phone call, message, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of Douglas County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board does hereby proclaim September 2023 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in Douglas County and encourages all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of our mental health because mental health is health. Dated this 12th day of September 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Morgan?
I just wanted to thank you, Madam Chairman, for bringing this each year. And also, we may want to, at some point next year, add veterans into this because the number of veterans is really a shocking number, the suicides, especially those between 18 and 34. I saw some data on that, and it far exceeds others, even though we take every single one of them most serious. But the veterans thing is just, I think there's been over 65,000 in the last 10 years or some number like that. So, thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Very important topic. I would like to add, however, that perhaps we're all missing the big picture. The big picture is why? Do we ever discuss the questions as to why? And the other question is, among our teenagers, I didn't hear a quote about the figures on that. But all these national associations have all these facts and figures and best practices. But the problem doesn't get any smaller, so we need to talk about the big picture. Statistics, in college, a statistic professor said they can be nothing but lies and damn lies. So, I want to present to you a copy from Stand Up for America. Bridgette is her name, an article, Taking Back Our Lawless Cities. Just a quick reading of some of the main points on it.
Does this have to do with the resolution?
America's largest 100 cities, 64 are Democrats, 24 are Republicans, four are independents, and six are nonpartisan. Nearly double the violent crime rate. Beyond the rise in violent crime, crime the number one most popular in New York City, only 753,000 out of 4.7 million registered voters elected.
Larry, that doesn't have anything to do with the resolution.
Well.
You can save it for citizen comments.
The word is this, is that there's not enough people voting, for one thing. And you're not talking about the actual success of all these national associations and programs that we have for mental health. Combining mental health with corrections, crime, people, victim, criminals, is not a very good answer for either one of those groups of population. So, the city needs to rethink that.
Yep, agree. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the resolution?
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments? Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Go ahead and come forward.
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I was really excited to hear there's no proclamation about National Constitution Week. The 17th of this month is celebration of the constitutional signing date. So, I'd like to present one thing to the Board, the story of the Constitution. I'm speaking for we the people today. I'd like you to maybe consider rereading this in a joint session, emergency session or whatever. I am presenting some things that I emailed on, and I'll just read the title out real quick because we the people don't think that our government is performing for us any longer. And the Declaration of Independence did say, when any government, which means state, local, or federal, is not giving you the government that you need, it is your right, your duty to alter, change, stir off that government, replace it with one that will. Not necessarily a revolution like in France. They didn't learn from us, did they? But the first one is the principle of representative government under the direction of the people rather than king rule. The elections have something to do with it, too. And unfortunately, not enough people are actually really voting. And there appears to be a problem with the validity of the votes that have been cast. I guess we don't have a record of the votes cast anymore, so we can't go back and prove it, according to the Secretary of State. This is getting a very hot topic in all of the counties and all the states. So, I would like Douglas County to lead the way since you're the biggest county, most populous county, and in the center of the nation, to bring that into a presentation on the cost, the actual election of 2020, the machines involved in the count, and why we don't have the paper ballots anymore or a record of the cast votes, the votes cast. CBR, they call it. Okay, real quickly, I'll be done. Today is one day. I don't want to be cut off. I won't be much longer than my five minutes. Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project. They want to present clear notice of constitutional and statutory duty and obligation to perform honest, comprehensive, and transparency, due diligence in the securing and processing of the legal right to vote, preventing means and opportunity for bad actors and facilitating forensically auditable accounting of votes cast when requested. Mr. Robert J. Border ran for Secretary of State. He also ran for governor. He's been denied many, many, many requests by the state government for records and for information under the request for information laws. That's unconstitutional. We'd like to know why. Also, very interesting the other day, Mike Lindell, at the center of a lot of this, been charged, as has Mr. Trump and 19 other people, was trying to fix the elections or steal the elections, but it's actually the other way around. He had a very interesting interview with the prosecutor, and he charged the prosecutor with conducting an invalid indictment. You might want to watch that because most of the citizen follow the election stealing, feel the same way he did.
One minute.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Thank you, Louis. I thought you wouldn't be here.
Luisi Menes, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'd like to talk about your lobbyist to the Nebraska Legislature for this group and for the 2 o'clock group. I think that they are subpar. You have a subpar lobbyist engaging the legislature. And it's important that you remedy that because the Nebraska Legislature only meets three months out of the year or four, very short time. The biggest complaint I have from last session is that we had Senator Brewer put together a group of West outstate senators to nullify firearm laws here in Douglas County, which they are enforced through the city, Omaha. And those ordinance on firearm regulation passed mustard when they were passed, that they weren't infringing on anybody's rights, that they were to do with assisting the police department and their duties and also as a toolbox for them to conduct public safety work. However, as is the case often throughout the century, the Nebraska Legislature had to come in and say, "We don't like what's going on in Douglas County, and so, we're going to do something procedurally." And I think that's a problem because, like I said, these ordinance on firearms regulation didn't infringe on the rights, constitutional rights of the citizens of Douglas County and Omaha to be able to have a gun. So, I mean, I'm just saying, right? Mr. Brewer took outstate senators and said, "This is how you're going to conduct your business here in the metropolitan area." Where was the lobbyists? Where were you? Where was, where were the council members? Where were the citizens telling them that that's not the way to do public safety? And so, I challenge this group, the lobbyists, and the senators who voted to nullify these regulations to look at the nullified regulations and bring them to, or bring them up as state statutes for the purposes of urban living. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to committees, the first being the Finance. Item one, the budget report as presented. Item two, the monthly fee report from the Douglas County Clerk as presented. Item three, resolution adding the Amendment 10 to the Douglas County Employees Retirement Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a Resolution Authorizing an Award of $10,000 to the National Council for Mental Wellbeing to help provide mental health first aid training. And I would just like to give a little bit of background to this because it's a pretty exceptional story, especially since we just talked about this being Mental Suicide and Prevention Awareness Month. When we were given the dollar, ARPA dollars to use within our districts, I stayed with our theme, if you will, of using those funds towards mental health. I happened to come across a couple who was organizing a fundraiser through a foundation that they started in their, in their daughter's name, Paige. It's called Pay It For Paige, Play It For Paige, excuse me, who committed suicide. She was a star softball player, senior at SCUT, had an amazing future ahead of her. And they were having a golf tournament. And so I reached out to them and asked if I could meet with them to talk about what we could potentially do together for youth sports in having some training for the parents, the coaches, the trainers, anyone involved with youth sports, so that they, again, would have the education of mental health, suicide, and also talk about prevention. And to give them some tools that would help them know, one, what to look for, two, what to say. And so they agreed to work with me on this, and as well as the National Council for Mental Wellbeing. And so we have put together a group here in Douglas County, along with the SCUT High School, the Major League Baseball, and Kansas City Royals will be a part of this initiative, as well as Dr. Widman, who the Rosners, Mr. and Mrs. Rosner have been working with from the university for some time. And so what the plan is, is this funding will help mental health, the National Mental Wellbeing Council, to create the curriculum along with these sports advocates to train our sport folks, those involved in the sports, and then hopefully grow it from there. And it would be, again, in the honor of their daughter, Paige, through the foundation. And so I'm very excited about all of the things that we've done with our ARPA dollar to help our community, but this one holds a special place in my heart, that we are actually taking the memory of a young girl who had her whole life ahead of her, took her own life, but yet we're turning it around to do something positive, not only for those close to her and her family, but they're doing it across this country. You should hear the outreach people have given Mr. and Mrs. Rosner because they are so willing to talk about it so that no other family has to go through what they went through. So, anyway, I'm very excited about this initiative. We'll, we'll do the first run of the pilot, if you will, in October, and hopefully we'll be able to sustain it going forward, to add more and more schools and organizations to be involved in this type of training. So with that, I would ask a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a Resolution Authorizing the Addendum to the Deloitte Work Order to Provide an Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 for Funding to Pay for Deloitte Services. And this is to be funded from the ARPA award. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I felt that we have spent $1,911,081.25 on Deloitte since we engaged them back in 2020. We could have funded a combination of an internal attorney capacity with a local consulting firm to keep all of those dollars local, and we didn't. It's way over what was estimated at that time as our expenditure with Deloitte. And now we're going to top $2 million. I voted against it at every stage, and I'll continue to do that as a not best use of our dollars. They're supposed to be advising us on this, and most recently, when we came to a big question on what to do with mental health dollars on the Corrections Campus, we actually employed our county attorney, who issued a county attorney's opinion on that very topic, showing that we do have the capacity to do this ourselves locally. So this is, in my opinion, a largely wasted $2 million on a company that I think is advising us maybe from Texas. And we should probably look at doing this differently and saving some of those resources to be used locally.
Any other questions or comments? Larry?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This is an item I've talked about before, but particularly with Constitution Week. We the people expect due diligence from our elected officials. We supposedly have a say in that, but how often do we actually get to? But this craziness, absolute craziness, of inviting federal control of local government because you want the free money, you don't stop and think that it's not free. It doesn't come free. You may be asked to pay that back as a possibly non-permitted use of federal dollars. There are lots of people stealing those funds. They're going to have to pay it back. I'm not saying this is stealing them, but I don't remember what services exactly Deloitte provides. Didn't have time to research it. I remember the discussion a while back, but the way this, you know, $200,000 for funding to pay for, but then you say, we'll pay for it out of ARPA funds. This is absolutely way beyond what the founding fathers envisioned. And with all of the immigrant problems, the border problems, and the money that people apparently are not aware of being spent to house these people that are illegally coming across our border, taking over New York City, for example. You don't believe that? Pay attention to the news. That's coming out of federal tax dollars, property tax dollars, and it's going to break the bank both nationally and locally. You've got to stop doing these kind of things. If a business can't survive without ARPA dollars, then it doesn't, it doesn't deserve to survive. Don't replace physical plant with ARPA money. Make them pay for it, even the nonprofits. Stop funding things that other people need to pay for themselves. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Help us to fulfill requirements regarding reporting when, quarterly or annually, when we're required to report back to the feds? I don't know.
Commissioners? Yes, in addition, keep in mind that $500,000
Patrick, can you identify yourself?
Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator. Keep in mind that $500,000 of that approximately $2 million was for that call center when we did rental assistance to the CARES Act using general assistance, working with that call center, which was a very beneficial process, much needed, and it turned out to be a very successful program. But yes, you know, $166 million in CARES Act, $111 million in ARPA funding, $10 million in emergency rental assistance. This amount that we're paying, approximately $2 million, to Deloitte accounts for approximately .7 tenths of a, seven tenths of 1% of the total amount. So to say that we could do this much cheaper locally is, I think, inaccurate. So we got a very valuable service for the money we spent. It's much needed. We're way downstream now. We would appreciate you not trying to change horses when we're this far downstream. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I was just curious to see if they, they help on the reporting side, which obviously we want to be on top of. You know, I would agree with some sentiment in regards to, like, future advising, especially with one or two big projects in front of us currently and down the road. You know, obviously, we have leaned on the legal expertise we do have internally. But, you know, as mentioned, we are pretty far down this road, and at least they're helping us with that reporting. So thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to add to what Patrick has said. My friend who joins me on the Budget Committee, we talked to Joe Lorenz numerous times about this and the cost, and how important it was to have their input as we moved forward with this. So I'm for approval of this amount.
With that, no other question? Oh, Louis, sorry.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I am opposed to this, not because you're spending money, but because of who benefits from the service. Deloitte is working for, Deloitte Intouch is working for the state of Nebraska. They're working for the county. They're working for the city. And at the county level, the Finance Department is the only, the division that benefits from the service. When the contract came forth, there was no public engagement clause in this service that Deloitte was awarded. And so now I bring forward my opposition that we have, that the community at large has not benefited, has not been educated, has not received information directly from Deloitte. And that's the biggest issue for me, is that you want to say that you have to do some things the way that they need to be done. But I, I'm telling you, this could have been different. The, Mr. Kavanaugh outlines it, and I'm adding that there could have been a public engagement clause. They could have had a presentation on the money and how it needed to be doled out. The public doesn't benefit from this, as, and the standpoint of the contract with Deloitte Intouch. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I we seems ages ago, we went through this, and I certainly put myself in a weird spot. If anybody from Deloitte was actually watching me when we first did this, they're probably going, oh, we don't like that guy because I was not overly I didn't use a lot of praise to reflect my feelings about Deloitte. But, but Commissioner Morgan made a good point. I I said this before, I believe, and I'll say it again. The federal government handed out hundreds of billions of dollars of free money, free cash. And, and a lot of that money came to us. And we wanted the type of, I'm just explaining, we wanted the type of expertise and understanding that could deal with that type of what we would consider, at that time, a monumental effort. Not one time, not one time have I heard that somebody said, well, this wasn't done right, this money's going to get clawed back, this is going to happen because you guys did this wrong. We followed the best information that we possibly could follow, based on the experience that an organization like Deloitte and others have the experience, too, to say, the feds are doing something unprecedented, how do you deal with it? We dealt with it. And the armchair quarterbacks that walk up and talk about this three years later, it's like, I watched the Nebraska game last weekend, I can sit around all week long and try to figure out why 21-year-old kids are dropping footballs. Doesn't make any difference. Not one time, after billions and billions of dollars and millions of dollars coming here, have I heard somebody say, you did it wrong. Not one time. You have no proof, there's no, there's no information out there that indicates that anything we did was incorrect. None of the money's been clawed back. Nothing's happened. I, I was afraid I'd go off on a tangent, and I did. Look, I have no love lost for Deloitte. I said it. Who, do we want to go back three years and go, well, we made a mistake back then? Okay, fine, go ahead. Tell me where we made the mistake. I don't see it. We've got, we've got $52 million left to spend. Deloitte is working on it, our county attorney's office is working on it. I'm not sure I understand the problem, and I'm not saying anybody on this board is saying, because I didn't hear it, that we did anything totally incorrect as far as picking Deloitte, even Commissioner Kavanaugh. But he would have liked to have gone a different direction, I respect that. What I have a problem with is, and I'll end it here. I, what I have a problem with is the federal government, I said this a long time ago, they drove this truck into a ditch. You don't hand out billions of dollars without gross domestic product and not expect that there's going to be some adverse ramifications, and there were. But I would contest, not from this angle, I haven't seen it. Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm done.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing, no. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
For the record, there actually have been people who stood before this body, lawyers, former mayors, and other public officials, warning on clawback of millions of dollars expended in the jail expansion that was considered and, I think, put forward, maybe it was last week. That is based on a, in part, Deloitte opinion that raised concerns about going forward with jail expansions. This is something that I think that we should take seriously because going forward, that's the real biggest warning that we've received from them. And I think that that was underlined in a county attorney's opinion that raised some of the same concerns. So just for the record, there have been concerns expressed publicly here, privately, and county attorney's opinions, and in opinions that we've paid for as part of this expenditure to Deloitte, from Deloitte, saying you have risks of clawback if you do a jail expansion. So that's all, thanks.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And this is, this is not me venting, this is actually responding to what Commissioner Kavanaugh just said. Fair enough, but the interesting part is, I think he's making our point, he's making my point for me. We, we did our due diligence. Deloitte was involved, county attorney's office was involved, and, you know, and in fairness, Commissioner Kavanaugh voted for this particular dissection of the amount of money that was going to go to the expansion of this jail. I believe you did, sir. We'll, we'll carry this debate on later, I'm sure. The, the point is, this process actually worked, at least it has to this point. We've been doing our due diligence here. I don't see anything that's fallen through the cracks. Now, could it in the future? Sure, I don't have a crystal ball. What I'm saying is, what have we done wrong, other than spending money that some people don't believe we should have spent? I would argue that the money was already here, we had to spend it, there's nothing we could do about it. You want to, you want to charge off to wash You want to, you want to charge off to Washington DC and try to figure out why they dumped over $200 billion into the economy without any gross domestic product? Knock yourself out. As a matter of fact, I'll go check how much the flights cost. Go do it. Find out. You're not going to get any answers. All I know is, we had a problem thrust upon us. We tried to solve it. We're still trying to solve it. And believe me, it's a problem. Somebody hands you a bunch of cash, doesn't mean that it's a panacea. It's a problem. And I think we're getting, I, I think we are making strides. All I would say is, there's a dichotomy between what we did, part of that money that's going to the expansion of a mental health service in our corrections facility, and the rest of the money that's been earmarked, potentially earmarked, for, for short-term acute care in community mental health. We made that decision about a month ago. There were a bunch of people on this board that voted for that dichotomy. I'm a little confused that people are going now, "Well, wait a minute. I didn't vote for that," or, "I don't remember that." Yet, we did. Madam Chair, thank you.
All right. With that, no other lights. There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes five to one. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Next, we'll move to Community Services. There is a request to set a public hearing date for Tuesday, October 3rd, for the board to consider a proposed golf court car ordinance to allow golf cars to be driven within the Sanitary and Improvement District 453 in, it is actually West Shores. Is there a motion to set public hearing for Tuesday, October 3rd?
Most approve.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is Human Resources. The weekly personnel from civil service as presented. No legislative issues at this time. That we do have executive session for legal advice, union negotiations, real estate.
There's also provision in there that we're going to use in the statute for discussion of implementation of security personnel and devices.
Okay. So, is there a motion to?
So moved.
It's contract, it's actually contract negotiations, not union.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry.
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Recording stopped.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan to re-convince adjourned, second by Commissioner Garcia. Motion passes six to zero, we're adjourned at 11:16 a.m.